That moving on to item nine point one is adopt resolution providing for the appointment of nominated city officer as elected at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four election and canceling the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four municipal election for District Two and invite our city clerk, Leon Connor, in person here to the podium to provide a report. We're in many hats tonight. You're driving the bus over there and doing all the thing.
Thank you, Mayor Ren and council members. Hi, nice to see you at this side of the room of the chamber. This evening, I'm going to present an update to you on the status of the district elections with specific consideration for District Two. Staff is seeking the direction from council. So with a brief recap. Pardon the disruption. Okay, so a brief recap would be that at the July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three council meeting, council had approved an ordinance, ordinance nine sixty-three to transition to the district based election. That would mean that the city would adopt a five district electoral map and they would have five council members to be selected at a future election for four year term. We're now here at that point. So at the June third city council meeting, council had approved to consolidate the general municipal election with the general election on November fifth of two thousand and twenty four. Most recently, we just completed the nomination period, which ran from July fifteenth to August ninth of this year, and we didn't do too bad. Every district of one, two, and district five had candidates pool or residents, I should say eligible residents, pull papers to participate in the election. And as you'll see in the third column there on the bottom right, we had five of seven candidates, resident candidate respond and file their paperwork, return their paperwork and become qualified candidate. However, we do have some direction that we're needing from council, council, leading up to this November fifth election. The next screen is just a visual aid with a little bit more detail and for the public to just remind them that districts three and districts four will participate in the election process for two thousand and twenty six. You will also see that for district two, we had one qualified candidate, Andre Obolinski. And what that means when there is a single nominated qualified candidate in our district is that the code, the election code allows city council to take one of the following actions. So the first option would be to appoint the office, appoint to the office, the person who was nominated as if they were elected at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four election. The second option doesn't apply to Pleasant Hill this go around because we do have at least one qualified candidate in district two. And then the third option would be to hold the election. The note on the right is to remind council that the election code also states that by the seventy-fifth day prior to the November fifth election, if no appointment is made, then the district two election would still be held along with districts one and five. So I just want to dive a little bit deeper into the options that are before you to give you some information about each direction. Council could appoint the candidate, and if you did so, you would adopt the resolution this evening. There would be no city council candidate listed on the ballot on November fifth for district two specifically, and there would be no write-in section on the ballot for district two specifically. If council chooses option three, and I do just want to preface and say that this is just a mock-up ballot for visual purposes, this does not actually reflect the county ballot, but the qualified candidate would be listed on the ballot as well as spaces for write-in candidates. Now, this is for sure happening in districts one and districts five and has the potential to happen for district two if council moved to hold an election. With regards to the candidate write-in period, just to give you a little information about that process, it runs from September ninth to October twenty-second, and during that time, residents of districts one, five, two, if you hold the election, can submit a letter of intent to the city clerk, yours truly, would pull paperwork and have to get a minimum of twenty signatures on the nomination ballot, turn all of their paperwork in by the twenty-second and become qualified through the county. If any candidate does that for districts one, five, and potentially two, their name still would not appear on the ballot. All it does, or not all it does, what it does is give them the eligibility to be written in by resident voters of their district. So as an example, if I live in district two and I filed the paperwork as a write-in candidate by that October twenty-second deadline, and city manager Bender Nagel also lives in district two and wants to run but does not file his paperwork, residents who live in district two and listed his name would not, their, their listing of his name would not count in his favor because he didn't qualify. Whereas if they wrote my name down, it would count as a vote in my favor because I qualified as a write-in candidate. I also want to present to you the financial implications of moving in either direction. So with the appointment, the choice to appoint the candidate, the qualified nominated candidate in district two, county has assessed approximately three hundred dollars in fees that they would charge the city, which is for filing. They still are processing a draft ballot right now until they hear back from the city and some setup fees, but it would be a total cost of about three hundred dollars. If the council decides to hold the election for district two specifically, it would run a cost of twelve thousand dollars approximately for the city. If county then, excuse me, county, if council chose to appoint that candidate, we would be looking at a savings of about eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Because of that significant cost, staff is recommending to the council to adopt the proposed resolution and appoint that nominated candidate of district two as if he were elected at the November fifth election and to also cancel the district two election, November fifth, general municipal election for district two specifically, which would save the eleven thousand, seven hundred dollar cost. I do have on Zoom, city attorney Janet Coulson and BBK's master city clerk Stephanie Smith. So if mayor would allow, I'm going to switch screens so they can answer questions that council may have.
Thank you for wearing multiple hats tonight. As our city manager puts it, we may be small staff, but we're mighty, right? Wear many hats. You can stay over there if you'd like. Yeah, we can ask you questions from here if you believe the council is okay with that. All right, cool. We'll open it up to preliminary questions from the council. We have council online, different spelling. Councilmember Flaherty.
These are probably for Leon. So in our last budget, we budgeted for district elections in the three districts.
You're correct, yes.
Right, so the savings would be a journal entry of funds that were budgeted not being spent.
You're correct.
It seems to me that when we were talking about district and general elections, that at least at the time, we thought district elections would be less costly to the city as opposed to a general election. Is that still the case or is my recollection just fuzzy?
As I'm experiencing it so far, it seems to be overtime, and that would be because previously we held an at-large election, so we're being charged by the county for the full cost of the city, elections for the city, whereas now we're being charged not quite a fifth, but they parted into that and it's based on population. So we're paying for three districts, at least as of right now, and then in two thousand and twenty-six, we would be charged just for two. So it's stretching the costs a long time. Janet or Stephanie, I don't know if you have something to add?
Well, I do, if I may. I think the cost savings was meant to be for the candidates in the district, a smaller segment of the population, not having to run a citywide campaign, it would be less expensive, and perhaps we'd have more people who couldn't afford a citywide campaign, but they could afford a district campaign. My recollection is that was what we talked about when we talked about cost savings.
I thought it was both. I do recall the cost of running a campaign being less and campaign being more accessible to more folks than a citywide campaign, but I thought there were also just the county cost of the election that passes through to us was sort of prorated, given that it was not a full city election.
And I, just with regards, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leon. That is typically the case. For example, say there were twenty thousand voters in Pleasant Hill, the county would be sending twenty thousand ballots for an at-large election. They're only sending, and if it's equal population, there are four thousand, four thousand voters per, per district. This time, they're only going to be sending twelve for three. So if you take one of those out, they're only going to be sending eight. So there is a cost savings to the city because they're not preparing and mailing as many ballots to every voter at each election.
Right, thank you. Just a question on the, on the write-in process. I don't know that that's ever been a subject of discussion since I've been working or volunteering here at the city. Do the write-in candidates have to follow the same qualifications in addition to what you articulated, but financial disclosures during that same time period?
Yes, the qualified writing candidates do have to submit the financial paperwork. They don't have the opportunity to do the candidate statement because it wouldn't appear in the ballot, but all other, the nomination paper and the financial documents.
And then, and then the fee that's charged to candidates, that fee would be charged to the write-in as well, or is that waived because there's no ballot statement?
The latter. So the candidates who have already qualified paid within the two hundred dollar range each based on their district, and that was a cost that was assessed by county, because there would be no candidate statement provided or an opportunity of that provided to a write-in candidate, there is no fee assessed to them, and our city doesn't currently charge a filing fee, which can only be a maximum of twenty-five dollars per write-in candidate anyway.
And this is probably, well, it's a hypothetical for sure, but one that probably would never become reality. But what if the council decided to hold the election and there were no votes, no qualified votes were cast?
So if even, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but if even one person votes for the qualified candidate that's listed, I believe they would win that election.
That's, that's why I didn't think it was a realistic hypothetical, but it seemed there'd be at least one vote for the candidate. So, but, but hypothetically, what if, for whatever reason, about there were no qualified votes cast, would that then return the issue back to city council to make an appointment?
It would, and the screen that had the options, that second option would come into play where council could appoint somebody, since there isn't anybody within the district who would qualify.
It could be treated as any other vacancy after the election. If no one was, if no one was elected, that it would be treated just like any other vacancy.
Got it. While this is a unique situation because it's districts, we did have this issue come up in two thousand and twenty where no one filed papers to run against the three incumbents. And in that instance, the city opted to appoint the, I guess, reappoint the incumbents and cancel the election. And I don't know that any of the other options were even discussed at the time, but it was also during COVID. So, all right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Vincent has a question.
This is for council. Does this election or election code section only apply to cities?
This particular section only applies to cities. Special districts have a similar provision, but it's under the uniform district election law. It's a different code section.
Right, sorry about that. Having difficulty finding my buttons.
That's okay. That helps explain it because I was gonna, just personally for myself, I pulled papers for a separate position as a BART director, and when the filing deadline closed, there were no other people that qualified besides myself, and I've been notified by the county clerk that my ballot statement fee would be refunded and I would not appear on the ballot as part of their procedural process through the county. I know there's quite a few other positions, even in our town, I reckon Park, I believe both candidates filed and were unopposed and qualified, and so I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe either their names will appear on the ballot as well, since both incumbents qualified and no other papers were received. And I wasn't sure because we're both special districts in those examples versus city and why the codes would be, and that's why I'm looking to council on Zoom here, if the, what the disparity is between. I'm sorry, Jen.
School board, same thing.
Okay.
School board.
Okay, and school boards, okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Noack, did you have any follow-up questions or anything?
No, I didn't have any, I didn't have any questions. You know, it's, it's, I was surprised to hear it was different for the cities than for special districts. We know, you know, Wreckin Park has, as Zach knows, has had many elections without actually elections. So I was surprised to hear this, and we didn't have, do anything in two thousand and twenty-two, so, or two thousand and twenty, so I was, I was surprised, but glad to hear the savings would be eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars if we don't do this, so.
All right.
No other questions for me.
All right, and then Councilmember Shes, I just want to give you an opportunity for your voice to be heard of getting questions before public comment, okay?
Questions, thank you.
All right.
I mean, I have comment, but I don't have question.
Okay, I'll open public comment, and then if we have another further discussion after public comment, then we'll bring it back for further discussion. This time, I'd like to open, let's see here. Okay, I would like to open public comment. Comments are limited to minutes per speaker. You may provide comments by giving a speaker card to the clerk of the dais. Before we take our live comments here in the chambers, I'd like to report that the city council did receive written correspondence on this item from Vasily Nikola, and I apologize about pronunciation, and Darcy Matthews. Madam clerk, do we have any speaker cards on the side? There you are, all ready to go. And first card I have is Kevin Kennedy. Kevin, would you like to speak on this topic? No, not at this time. Kevin, you don't want to talk? Okay. Well, let's enter your information to the record, and Amanda, would you like to come back up?
So I just wanted to say that it's perhaps unfortunate for democracy when only one candidate runs, but I think Andre has been very dedicated to the city. I think it's unrealistic that someone could come forth as a write-in candidate. I'm a candidate for district five and all the legwork it takes to establish a bank account, file the forms. I just think it's very unrealistic that somebody would do that, and I would therefore favor just appointing Andre and saving that money.
Great, thank you. Last call for speaker cards in the chamber? None in the box? Get rid of the box over there, I don't have it anymore. I'm just kidding. All right, with that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the dais for further discussion. Anyone would like to lead it off?
I'm happy to start.
Okay, Vice Mayor Noack, go ahead.
Yeah, so, no, I, I sort of, I agree with Amanda's comments, and I also think, you know, the opportunity was very well publicized. I thought our PIO Jeff Gillette did a good job of getting out in social media that the time was available to, for candidates to, to file papers, and I think that was very well known. And so I think to the extent there was nobody interested in doing it in that methodology, a writing, one would be much more difficult, so. And I think it's, you know, eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars is good savings for us. Our budgets are tight, and any place we can save money, I think that's appropriate.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor Noack. All right, Councilmember Vincent.
Two years ago, when I looked at the candidates, I saw Andre's name, and I really didn't know who he was. And shortly after that, Ken Carlson was elected to the Board of Supervisors. We went through an appointment process. Andre applied, I applied, so I got to know Andre a bit through that. I talked about, you know, if you're thinking about council, get involved in the community. And since then, he's joined, he's been on the board of the chamber, he's joined Rotary, he's joined the Fourth of July Commission, I see him at a lot of community events, so he's gotten his name out there and tried to be part of our community. I agree with the comment that the process for the election was well publicized. If people wanted to run, they could have filed during that deadline. I believe there was one person that pulled papers but never actually qualified to do that. So I'd rather see Andre appointed and use the time between now and the election to maybe watch some commission meetings or committee meetings or go to those meetings to get to know what those commissions do and just have time to prepare to serve on the city council.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Shes or Flaherty?
Go ahead. Um, I think my point of view, it might be a little different from my colleagues, but this to me is not a, to me, a question of the viability of Mr. Obolinski's candidacy. I, I have, this is, I have, you know, nothing but good things. This, this isn't really about his candidacy. What this is about to me is the fact that we are moving right now to district elections. We're in a unique scenario here. You know, as well as a job that our PIO might have done, the reality is, is that most people in the city don't know that there's district elections. And, and I think it's, I think they're going to be, and that's fine, I mean, I supported district elections. It's not, again, not an indictment of district elections either, but that, that's the reality. And so we're going to, you know, I think when people who are living in districts one, two, and five get their ballot, I think they're going to be, a lot of them are going to be surprised that there is only districts. Now, I think it's, I think it's going to be even a little more odd if maybe they do hear about district elections and they live in district two, and, and now we don't even have anybody there. And I just think now, in light of what, I mean, this is, this, to me, what we did in two thousand and twenty, or what the council did, I wasn't on the council then, what they did in two thousand and twenty is very different from what's going on right now. I think that, you know, part of the reason that we all, that we supported this, I'm sorry, we, most of us supported district elections, was because it created an opportunity. It created an opportunity for people to run, they don't have to run a whole citywide election. And so I'm just, it just seems a little odd to kind of take away that opportunity. And I, and I think, you know, realistically, yeah, probably no one's going to come in and, and, and take away the, the ability for Mr. Obolinski to pretty much probably win this race and eventually sit on the dais. But I just think that it, when we are transitioning right now into district elections, I think we need to be as transparent as possible. And this, I mean, this is all legal, I mean, it's not, I'm not implying that it's not transparent, but to the average person out there who's not aware of district elections, I just think that it would be service better so that people are aware that Mr. Obolinski stepped up when no one else did. And, you know, if there's a write-in opportunity, there's a write-in opportunity, but I just, I, I'm not comfortable with the idea of just kind of not having it at all. I, you know, I, and I'm willing to spend the eleven thousand dollars, you know, we budgeted that, and so I personally don't think, you know, I have a, I have a problem with, with spending that money for this cause.
Thank you, Councilmember Shes. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I don't think this discussion is about the viability of any candidate. I think it's more about the process and what we think is best for the city of Pleasant Hill. And the two competing principles that speak to me that I hear tonight are, you know, fiscal responsibility and public engagement, the two foundational cores of everything I've done for the city for the past twenty years. And if there's a choice between one or the other, I would choose public engagement so long as it wasn't fiscally irresponsible. You know, this is an interesting situation. We have district elections, and, and I do agree with Councilmember Shes that from my own experience, from the inquiries I get from people who know me and my candidacy and my service, asking me, am I running and why am I not running in this coming? Because despite our best efforts, I think a majority of the voting population is not aware that we have district elections or what districts are up for election this year. And so I saw the opportunity of election, having a further reach, outreach to the public to let them know that there are district elections, there's district elections in your district, there's only one candidate on the ballot, so I don't think the outcome is going to be any different, but I see it as a public engagement process that I think is well worth the expenditure of the city funds to do that. In two thousand and twenty, we were faced with no opposition for the three incumbents that year, which I believe was Ken Carlson, Mayor Ren, and myself, and we didn't have this type of discussion at that time. We just canceled the election. It was, it was COVID, we didn't have much public engagement at all, and we just sort of were walk-ons. And so I'm mindful of that and, and, and asking myself, and just sharing my thoughts with the rest of you, is why is this situation different today? And the reason I think it's different today is because we have a different election process of districts. And a candidate who might be the only name on the ballot might want the election papers to go forward because we'll put his or her name in every voter's mailbox in the district, where that candidate may not have recognition at that point or at this point. So I think that for a sole candidate, there is a benefit. You know, I think the, the other possibility, though, we should at least acknowledge is on a general election, a write-in is, would not be viable. Once you get qualified and the expense of it, I just don't think it is a feasible outcome. But I think it's a possibility on a district election where a significantly less number of voters need to vote, that somebody could mount a write-in campaign. And again, without regard to the candidate in this district that we're talking about, as part of my passion for public engagement, I would encourage write-in candidates in a vacuum. I'm not encouraging a write-in candidate here at all, but just the idea that there's an opportunity for further public engagement in that manner speaks to me personally. So my take on this is that I would want to go forward with the election. The expense is baked into our budget. In the scheme of things, this is less than the amount of money we committed to the Wreckin Park District to just sponsor their special events, and I think public engagement is certainly worth at least that amount of money. So, and it's not fiscally irresponsible, it's not going to matter to the ultimate bottom line budget in this, in this current budget cycle. And for that reason, I personally would advocate for the election to go forward in this district with just the one candidate on the ballot.
Thank you for your comments. My general comments, you know, I, I don't think it's fiscally responsible, but I, I think what Vice Mayor Noack said is there's an opportunity to help save some money and go back to the city's account, even though we've allocated for it. I know there's other things that we can always use those funds for. I think we have precedent with two thousand and twenty. I know we're districting now, but with somebody who benefited in that scenario of not having to run, I know just personal experience, knowing that you don't have to mount a full-on election and things, and that's not necessarily a reason to not do this, but I think it, and this is a case and scenario when you're the only candidate that's there and you've qualified, you've done all the right things, you've followed all the right rules, you've followed the process and the procedures and everything that's been announced, you know, you know, I think very effectively from our PIO, and whether we run this district election for this district two or not, there's still always going to be those people that don't know there's districts in Pleasant Hill or the election process. And similar to Councilmember Flaherty, I get that question often at community events of, you know, are you going to run again this year or things like that? And so I, I think it's always a PR issue that we can continue to work on and improve on, but I don't think this particular instance for me is, is really necessarily a PR situation. I think Mr. Obolinski, and it's not about Mr. Obolinski in general, but whatever candidate that came forward and did the right things, qualified legally and legitly, for us to kind of, not necessarily make exceptions, but just create other opportunities for others to go against somebody who did all the right things and followed all the right rules and filed on time and got the signatures and is qualified, I, I, I probably wouldn't go forward with that, and I would make the, at this point, making a point, a motion to appoint the office, the person who has been nominated to that with option one would be my motion at this time. I'll second. I have a motion from Mayor Ren and a second from Councilmember Vincent. Is there any further discussion before we go to vote on this?
My only comment is your comments seem to indicate that a write-in candidate is, is slipping by the rules or pulling a fast one. And as I understand, as was explained to us, the write-in candidacy is statutorily recognized.
No, I get that.
As an opportunity, so it's not a, it's not a negative or a cheat or a workaround, it's just an opportunity that's created in every election.
Right.
That anybody can be a write-in candidate if they follow the rules.
Right, no, that's an option they could do.
Right.
But I, I, I think in this circumstance, I, I think the person who is qualified should be appointed to the office and. And, you know, obviously, there is, there are ways that somebody could qualify for a write-in candidate. But at this juncture, I, I think it's been demonstrated that we go through the appointment process. My answer to that. Actually, you're welcome. Thank you. Any other further discussion before we ask the clerk for a vote? Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call vote, please?
Flaherty?
With no ill regard to the candidate, I would vote no.
Noack?
Yes.
Schess?
Same as Mayor Flaherty or Councilmember Flaherty, no.
Benson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
3-2, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's comments and a good discussion there. At this point, we'll adjourn, no further business to our next regularly scheduled meeting, September 9th, 2024. And congratulate Mr. Obolinski. Congratulations. He's adjourned.